Well, to order the Kaiser City Council in a joint work session with the Traffic Safety Bike Weds Ped Committee, it is Thursday, January 18th, 2024. And ask our city recorder to please call and roll for the record.
Councilor Reed.
Here.
Councilor Kohler.
Here.
Councilor Hesman.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Council President Starr.
Here.
Councilor Duran.
Here.
Councilor Cross.
Council Cross is excused this evening.
Committee Member Liam.
Oh, that's you.
Here.
Committee Member Myers.
Here.
Committee Member Dempster.
Here.
Committee Member Philbrick.
Here.
Committee Chair Saldivar.
Here.
Vice Chair DeBlossi.
Here.
And Committee Member Sangster.
Here.
Thank you very much. This is a great pleasure to get these two groups together and talk about the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. But before we do that, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome to the Kaiser City staff, our new City Attorney, Joe Lindsay. And Shannon Johnson is now, as you see, he's our City Attorney Emeritus. So we're happy to have. But welcome, Joe, and we're glad to have you part of the team, and I look forward to working with you in the coming many years.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, let's go to the Traffic Met Traffic, sorry, Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. This was a document that I didn't even know existed until this was brought up, that it needed to be redone. And was delighted to see that the Traffic Safety Bike Ped has taken the lead in helping us update this significantly. So with that, I'd turn it over to Chair Tommy Saldivar, who has led this effort, to talk about how we got here, the purpose, and then our, the update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, a little background on the document itself that was brought to our attention not too long ago. It was originally drafted in 1999, so it's a bit outdated and due for some overhauling. Never been used, to my knowledge, that's the feedback I got from city staff. Until this past year, it was brought to our attention by one of the neighborhood associations, and I don't recall which one, West Kaiser? West Kaiser brought it up. They, they, I'll get into all the details later. They discussed with us that it was very difficult to navigate through, and we, as the committee, agreed to take on the update. We formed a work group to discuss the initial needs, and then over time requested feedback to get us to where we are now. I did look into other cities' Neighborhood Traffic Management Programs also, to see how we compared, to give us an understanding of what to update to. And they're all very, very, very similar. So we were on the right track, and that gave us some direction to work from. So the changes that were done were driven by the need to simplify the directions in the document. The process was very clunky. However, we did not change the process itself, we just updated how to read it. A lot of it was just rearranged. For those of you who have looked at the redline version, that is insanely redlined, it's simply because a lot of it was either wordiness was removed, I felt some stuff was just very redundant or overcomplicated to say something very simple, or was taken out of the body of the document and put into an appendix where it seemed more fitting. And then there was a clarification of the steps, because the process is just very laid out. It's laid out very nicely, it just needed some understanding. I do want to say, it was brought to my attention today that I've been using the wrong acronym for our committee in the whole document. So if in this feedback session, that's one of the things you wanted to bring up, no need to bring it up, that I will correct that. The document itself is laid out in several sections. For starters, it's what the program is, and what street it applies to, because not all streets in Kaiser qualify for this program. There's going to be other processes to follow for the larger roads. It then takes us through the process to follow, who has what role, how the projects are scored for recommendation, how it proceeds into development, how it's funded, monitoring by our Committee for Analysis after the fact. And then in the back, the appendices contain the needed documentation, the survey application instructions, scoring details, and a toolbox of choices to use when working through it. We are not ready for adoption at any point, or at this point, we're not ready for adoption, we're aware of that. We still have lots of questions, and there's lots of room for discussion. That's what I have so far.
Fabulous. Thank you so much. And any questions on how we got here thus far? Okay, I'm seeing none. But I'd like to do, we've had an opportunity to take a read through this, and can we walk through the sections? And unfortunately, I only have the redline version, so. Do you have a clean one?
I have both.
Okay. Clean one's easier to follow. If I can borrow yours, thank you very much.
I'll take the third one.
No clean one? Okay. I appreciate the redline, so we know what changed, but you're right, there's a whole lot of change. When you're going from the last century till now, it's a bit of a jump.
Yes.
And if we could, on the final one, put a table of contents?
Okay. Good.
Because on the PDF, you can link it to jump to sections. Especially on a computer, so that would be awesome.
Great, yeah.
Okay, so let's go ahead and start with the beginning portion, about what a Neighborhood Traffic Management Element is. Do you want to talk a little bit about that? Because I'm not sure. So this is the introduction, talking about what this is. Go ahead.
This section discusses mainly, I read the script for coming here, I just don't have it memorized, so bear with me. This section talks about the program overarching, and how we are going to use, no, that's, yeah. These aren't really divided well into sections, like one, two, three, four, five, to where I'm going to probably speak very eloquently to it, so I'll do my best to follow the correct order. The first section talks about which roads qualify, and the concept behind the program itself, and how we want to make sure that we approach in an equitable way the roads that will get funding from a public source, so that there is a clear transparency to why those choices were made.
And so are there any questions about which streets are included? So these are the local streets, neighborhood streets, collectors, so are minor arterials, major arterials are not included in this, because those have a lot, a different functionality? Council President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just in regards to that, that those, that certain arterials were removed, is there a way in the plan that we, where we reference, that, like, right on this first page, it talks about them being, those roads are addressed through a different process? Can we link to what that process is, right where it says different process? And then, in parentheses, link to what that process is?
Yes, but I don't think there's any clear process to follow beyond this. When I reached out to Public Works, saying, how do we handle arterials, so that we know when we're asked those questions, who to direct them to? The answer was given in the staff response.
Yeah, I saw that.
So if we want staff to develop a process to have documented for those, that's beyond the scope of what I can do.
So then I would respectfully ask that, instead of putting in the plan that this is, those issues are addressed through a different process, we find a different way to word that, or we create the process, so people know what that is. Because saying it's addressed through a different process, and then not having the process developed is confusing to me, and befuddling that we would say something like that.
So what direction shall I put in here?
That's, I think, what we're talking about, or send it to staff. But I, we can't say it's addressed through a different process, when there is no process. And my favorite thing is, the process matters. So let's get a process.
So I see a couple of people raised their hands, but before we go to Council Hesman and Mr. DeBlossi, I'd like to go to Mr. Lawyer.
Did you, thank you, Madam Mayor, did you think I had my hand raised?
No, because I would like to.
Just wanted to make sure.
As the keeper of the Transportation System Plan.
Okay, the, I would recommend change the language from a different process to consult with the Public Works Department and/or the Police Department, because issues on arterials may be safety-related, may be road condition-related, or may be law violation-related. So not trying to put everything in one place, but depending on the concern or complaint, it would either go to Public Works or the Police Department. I don't think we need a process for arterials, because they're, as their nature, heavily traveled, lots of vehicles every day, lots of traffic signals adopted that control the flow of traffic, concerns that come up, need to be, I would say, addressed promptly, and not go through a process to get addressed. That's my recommendation.
Great. So then we would just make change to that wording. Great. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Council Hesman, has ran his hand up, and then Mr. DeBlossi, and then I'll come to you, Mr. Dempster.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Chair, it's a little bit of an echo of what Mr. Lawyer says, but I think it would ultimately help the document, just to have that origin of definition. Namely, we know that ODOT has definitions for like, major arterial, minor arterial, local collector, or something like that. I think we, if we know that there is an ODOT-specific definition, or something that's been codified in a document elsewhere, we can put that in here, and I think that ultimately, the more we have it, shapes absolutely everything, especially in a PDF form. Otherwise, my suggestion would be, as far as, like, breaking this out into chunks, just let us know what page is, and we should be in good shape.
I do have a link at the bottom of this, well, page three, in the clean document. Basically, at the bottom of the section, it does link to the Transportation System Plan on our website, that lays out which roads are what, and I don't know if it goes into the criteria, but that's again above me.
Yeah, the definitions are at that link, the Transportation System Plan. So it's in there. But that's a great point, so people will know to go, look there for those definitions, which are not ones that we control, but they are industry definitions.
Understood. Also goes, what, shows, shows what happens when you rely on paper for a computer process.
All right, thank you. Mr. DeBlossi?
Well, to tie onto that, it would be nice if we could have either a hyperlink, or an actual map that shows the streets within Kaiser, and their classification. That way someone can look automatically, say, oh, Mike, because I clicked on the link, and it doesn't go to a map. I think a map would be a quicker way for someone to say, hey, the street won't fit under this process, so.
Yeah, and there's a, there is a map, is there not, of the, it just shows the street map with the classifications, Mr. Lawyer?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
In the Transportation Systems Plan.
Okay.
There is a functional classification map, yes.
So what I referenced is that plan, and I, and I referenced a figure in the plan that has the map on it. And I know, Mike, you had given me a link externally to a more interactive one, which I can use, if we feel that's the right choice. Okay?
Yeah.
I can do that instead. Okay.
Sounds like, sounds great. Mr. Dempster?
What page are you on?
Three.
On the revised, the newest one, the clean, the red lines?
The clean, yeah. It says three at the bottom, it's the first, first page of narrative.
All righty, thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, it would help, though, when you're making corrections, that you state the page in paragraphs.
All right.
Just in case I'm on the wrong page.
Okay. Anything further on the introduction? Mr. Lawyer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for clarification and general understanding, Neighborhood Traffic Management Program documents are by design cumbersome. And the reason for that is, they are used to identify an actual need for traffic calming measures on a given street in a given city, so that speed humps, traffic circles, whatever other measure may be, do not appear on every street in every city. So keep in mind, the cumbersomeness of these kind of plans is on purpose. So that, again, it identifies an actual need, as opposed to a perceived problem. It defines the problem, and then actions are taken based on that defined problem. I know that doesn't maybe make sense to some of you, but let's talk about speed humps for just a minute.
Speed bumps, speed humps, whatever you want to call them. Mrs. Jones lives on A
Street. She's concerned about speeding on her street. She comes to the committee and says, I'm concerned about speeding on our street. Committee member goes out, watches cars go by, said, yeah, there's a speeding problem, we're going to put a speed hump in. Mrs. Smith, who lives on B Street, Mrs. Jones got a speed hump on A Street, because they're speeding on her street, they're speeding on my street, too. Without qualitative data identifying the problem, to implement a measure, then you're just going to end up with having measures not everywhere, but potentially everywhere, when there's not really a problem. So these documents and these programs, as Chair Saldivar mentioned, ours is fairly typical of other cities. And that's the reason they are typical, is because they're, they are put together to define an actual problem, and not react to a perceived problem. Okay?
And for folks who are following along, the third paragraph in the introductory section talks exactly about that. It should be recognized that not all NTM measures are appropriate for all streets. And we've had those conversations regarding West Kaiser. We talked about the speed table by Cummings, we talked about the, we put in the speed flashing signal on Shoreline. A speed table on Shoreline didn't make sense, and a speed flashing thing might make sense on Cummings, but the speed table, even more so. So I think we were looking at measures that would actually yield the results that we were seeking, both as a policy body, and also as a neighborhood. That's how I understand this. Mr. Dempster? And then Mr. Philbrick?
Two things. One, the document's more designed, I've been in it since the beginning, to identify problems, not give Public Works or the City of Kaiser solutions. And when people come in and talk to us, and the traffic, my experience, has been that they, not only did they see a problem, but they immediately had a solution in their mind, and they came in and told us the solution. And then we asked why, and then they told us what the problem was. This document is supposed to clean that up. We're looking for problems, not solutions. We are really bright people in Public Works. They can come up with all sorts of solutions. But what this is to do is to identify the problem, and then expand on it, see if it really is a problem. I've been on the committee for years, and we had lots of problems brought forward that really aren't problems. I mean, they're not issues. So that will be straightened out. Okay.
All right, Mr. Philbrick?
Just, I want to thank Bill for his comments, because it helped me understand this document better. One thing which appears in the beginning here, which was a concern to me, and it also later in the document, appears a couple times, I think, and sometimes saying that it's hard to determine, is just simply the difference between cut-through and traffic. It seems to me that this applies if people are concerned about traffic on their street, regardless of if it's cut-through, or, or whatever, and speeding. And anyway, to me, the, the cut-through limits it, narrows it in ways that I think are not helpful.
Thank you. Do you have a, an edit that you wanted to do, or the fact that it's mentioned, because it is an, is a consequence of other measures, where people act like water, and they go the path of least resistance in their minds?
I would just experience traffic and speeding. That negatively impacts neighborhood livability. Just eliminate the adjective, cut-through.
Well, I appreciate the suggestion. Cut-through is a very specific type of traffic pattern that happens when people are avoiding traffic control devices. I know some people that major in that, they're like, ooh, how can I get from point A to point B without ever having to stop at a stop sign? That's the game. But to a bigger issue, what we're seeing when traffic calming, control, or in larger cities, other devices are added, people will then change the course that they travel, call it cut-through, call it whatever, but they're going to divert to avoid whatever measure's been put in place. And I think we need to really think that through before they're put in, so we don't end up with unintended consequences. I'd be okay with traffic, traffic, including cut-through and speeding. I'd be okay with that, but I think it needs to be addressed in how we are addressing the needs of neighborhoods specifically. If that could, that's just my thought on it. I'm going to go to Mr. Lawyer, and then I'll come back to Mr. Sangster. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You pretty much said what I was going to say, what I was going to simplify and say, cut-through traffic is a different phenomenon than just traffic. There are, there have been places in Kaiser where, where the public take a different route than they used to, because now there's a new traffic signal here, and I don't want to wait for that signal, so I'm going to cut through the neighborhood. So cut-through traffic is a different animal than just traffic.
My point is that from the, I don't have any disagreement at all with what Bill just said, or, Madam Mayor, what you said. In identifying the problem for the neighborhood, it doesn't matter what causes the traffic to happen. Their concern is that there is more traffic. When you analyze the impact of putting calming devices, or on the, on the system as a whole, then absolutely, you have to look at, where is this going to displace people, and the impact on other streets and stuff in the neighborhood. So all I'm, my only concern here was simply that this document seems to say that if you have a traffic problem, and it's not caused by cut-through, then you don't have a problem that can be addressed through this system. And I'm, and I, and, and to me, it should just be, if people are concerned about traffic and speeding, then here's an option for, for putting it before the city.
Thank you. I'm going to go Mr. Sangster, and then Mr. Dempster, and then Mr. DeBlossi? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The cut-through has been a discussion with this committee for dozens of years now. We do something on River Road, it goes into the neighborhood. And being a neighborhood leader, we hear, well, they did something over in West Kaiser, I'm just making this up, West Kaiser, and it's affecting us in Northwest Kaiser, because people are going that way. So I would definitely want in the document, a discussion, and a look at cut-through issues as we implement, or think of, solutions, whatever. But that, the other thing is, you know, we can't talk about the arterials, per se, but they have an effect on cut-throughs, as we well know. So we want, asking the question, is this a cut-through issue? Then we might be able to go back to River Road, go back to Wheatland, go back, and see what, what might be in the future plans. I know there's future plans for both Verta and Wheatland that will be coming up, and eventually Windsor Island. So yes, I want, I like your wording, let's keep it in.
So I might suggest, and I'll go to Mr. Dempster, to add, to experience increased traffic volume, comma, cut-through traffic, comma, and speeding. No, I'm getting a no from Mr. Dempster. Please proceed.
When you say cut-through, you're assigning a motive to the guy driving the car. You're guessing that's why he's doing that. Now, not saying he didn't do it, I kind of agree with Dave, it's a traffic problem. If you're going to, you don't want to start being specific at this point, on all of the different things that could happen, and list them all at this point in time. Cut-through is one issue. It may or may not have to do with speeding. You're guessing that that's the motive of the person. When you go to analyze the problem with the fact that the person's speeding- When you go to analyze the problem, the fact that the person's speeding down Chamawa, then you can decide why, or if he's speeding down, we had one last week, they're speeding down, what's that signal, the next signal north of Chamawa?
Deerport?
No, north.
North?
Plague. That, that's, that's the issue. People are cutting through and, because people said they're cutting through. And so, we did all the analysis and no, they're not cutting through. That wasn't them at all. There are hardly anybody using that as a cut through, although it looked like it would be, but it's not. Well, I don't think we need to get that detail. Leave it out. It's just a traffic problem. During the analysis, either who's ever looking at the form they turn in, or Public Works, can, they'll look at that. They're not going to avoid it. And there's other motives for going through neighborhoods beside it's quicker.
Thank you. Mr. DeBlossy?
Well, I don't have anything to say about that, but my, what comment is, it talks about in that first paragraph under the neighborhood traffic management element. Last sentence, "Left unmanaged over time, the city could find itself responding to issues of livability inefficiently case by case." Which struck me as odd because I thought the whole point of the neighborhood traffic management plan was to look at things case by case instead of a global look. So, I don't know if we even need that sentence because it seems either redundant or confusing. And if we are going to look at things globally, which I do think we do, we should, maybe it's through the TSP plan or something, but where we can, we can look at, you know, a speeding issue on, let's just say, Verta or Chamala or something, where you're looking at the whole area and coming up with a, a larger than just single neighborhood solution. I think that's something that, separate from this process, but would be valuable to the city and doesn't, wouldn't require a, a neighborhood association or, or a street, residents of a street to come in, to ask for help.
Thank you. Ms. Aldvar.
I'd like to respond to that. I took that sentence to mean they're preventing us from, what's a better way to word this? A big focus of this document is the scoring system. Because they're, they, when they designed this, they anticipated us to receive multiple projects and they need to categorize and prioritize where the money's going to go. So, this sentence is clarifying that we're not looking at each one individually, but we're looking at the list and deciding where to put the public money. So, I know it's not exactly what you're referring to, but it kind of is, and that's why the sentence stayed.
And, and hearing that, that totally makes sense. So, I guess it's a wordsmithing thing?
If you have a suggestion to clarify?
I'll think about that.
Okay.
Put a pin in it.
Yeah.
All right. Let's go on then to page four, the second page of narrative in the document, the NTM program, built on the three Es of transportation, education, enforcement, and engineering. These should be very familiar with all of us. It's really typical with transportation and other project development, to educate people so they know how to appropriately use a facility in force, but a lot of it. And I have seen these reverse, where engineering, if we design it right in the first place, then people will use it the way it is designed. And I think we have some fantastic examples in our community where we've done exactly that. The engineering has led to the types of uses and speeds and so forth that were the desirable outcome. I think Dearborn Northeast is a great example. So, I know this is a, a very typical formatting, but oftentimes it's the engineering that solves all the problems. You just build it the way it's intended to be used. So, that's just my comment there, but I love this part. Mr. Sangster?
The teacher has come out in me and I go with the four Es, with the fourth being encouragement. Well, there's teachers in this room, so they kind of know what I'm talking about. I know the police already do encouragement in traffic safety related to bicycling and commuting and just have that as a program. I, I don't want to redo the, the document. I know Tammy's looking at one, I'm not one, but I, I think we have to keep in the back of our minds that we need to encourage and as you, as you have said, Mayor, just now, we've had some wonderful engineering. That's encouragement when we talk about it. We don't have to change the document.
Ms. Aldvar, anything else on the NTM program and the process?
No, you, you, let's see here. You discussed the three Es. Want me to go on to the next section?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. So, the next section discusses the, the two criteria that we look at, which is the process itself and then the standards that apply to the process. And this just clarifies to the reader that that's the basis of this program. That leads us into the process itself and, like, reading it all would be terrible right now. I can do a clip notes version of the process or do you want to look at each section? What's the best approach to it?
So, let's look at the assessment process. So, there are several steps that go into the assessment of a project. So, we just walked through really quickly the step one, the identification of a problem. Step two, level one, action plan study. Analysis for three. Four is engineering, prioritization. Five, project development. So, those are the basics and then under each of these is, delineates process. So, we can start walking through these and get some comment and feedback from you. Mr. Dempster?
Yeah, we mentioned, when we were doing this last few months, on the assessment, we ended up with 75% of the fronting properties. I object to that. One is, okay, 50%. And what I was thinking of is if you look at this section of property, for example, Kaiser Road, you've got a big church, you've got a big apartment building, and then you've got a few houses. If everybody in the apartment building wanted something done to that street, which would be justifiable, I think they should be able to at least implement it, get it started. And, and just because the property owner, whether it's a church or one building, one chunk of property, shouldn't have that much control over the population, the residents of Kaiser. If you want to say, and I think it should be 50%, given democracy and all that stuff, not, so, either, either drop that all the way out and stick with the number of residents. And the other thing I'd question is, for example, the new apartment, they're putting it over on River Road north of Lock Haven, is the residents of that apartment complex should have some say about the, what goes on from now on along River Road on that section. Those are, it's a mixed use area, last I checked. And so, you could easily get the, the houses that are along there, plus the residents, and you could have 80% of the people want something looked at. Just remember, we're identifying problems, not solutions. Want something looked at. This denies them that right because it's too high of a percentage. And the same thing will be true over on step one, part B. Should be 50%, not 75% if we believe in democracy.
Well, I'm not going to go with that definition. Nice try, but no.
I know.
I'm going to go to Council President Starr, Ms. Aldvar, and then Mr. Haskman, and then Mr. Myers.
And then Mr. Sangster.
And then Mr. Sangster, circle back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, on item B, I think that we've heard in other issues and work sessions, concerns about a petition or getting signatures from, from people don't want to go knocking on doors of people they don't know because they don't know what's, what they're going to encounter. And so, I guess for me, item B, I, I see this method coming around again and again and again, yet we've also heard concerns on other issues that people are not comfortable knocking on doors. We've had the question about, you know, the no solicitation sign and conversation about what that, what's the definition of solicitation and et cetera. So, I am asking us as, whether it's a council issue or it is a staff needs to come back with a recommendation, I'm not sure. I'm identifying an issue, Mr. Dempster, but I don't know what the solution is of how do we get around that? Because this is, again, it's coming forward and seeing that we're asking people to go knocking on strangers' doors. And I see a head nod out there in the audience from a couple people. So, the help, let's walk through that or work through that issue.
So, before I go to whoever said was next, and I'm sorry, I didn't write it down, on B, the last sentence says, "If acquisition of these signatures is unattainable or is a safety concern, Public Works will assist in this need."
But why do we keep putting it in the document as part of the process if we've been told over and over again that people are not comfortable with it?
Because some neighborhoods, they are. But I think to your point that this, what we have done in the past, and I'm looking to see if there's a regulation, regulatory requirement for neighborhood buy-in. I know on street lighting, there's a requirement to form the district. Is that the same criterion here or is this preference? Mr. Lawyer?
There's no stated criterion here. It is preference. I will say that in my experience over the years of complaints from neighborhood traffic issues, there's small areas. What I mean by that, it's maybe six or eight or 10 properties, households. It's not a neighborhood issue. So, that talking to your neighbors is different than talking to the neighborhood. Okay? So, in the 75% discussion, based on my experience from what I've seen and the complaints I've done with over the years, I don't think that's too difficult to meet because we're not talking about a huge area. We're talking about 10 houses on a given street, for instance.
Okay. But I'm looking at people that have an issue with that. We've heard from people that have an issue with that. And yet, we still, I'm just, like, I'm just saying, for people that have come forward and said they have concerns about safety, yet we keep putting it in a document and we keep putting these qualifiers in it, that if acquisition of these signatures is unattainable or is a safety concern, Public Works will assist in this need. I might not be afraid of knocking on the doors to get people and ask people to sign a petition or sign that there's an issue or a concern, but I might not, I just might not want to do it. Because 75 people between where I live and where I see the problem is, is more than 10 households. And so, I might just say, "I don't want to do it," or "I have a safety concern." So, then we're putting the onus onto Public Works. It just seems counterintuitive to me to keep putting something in documents that people have expressed concern about, and yet we give them an out by saying we're going to send it to Public Works if that's an issue. Like, what if I just don't want to do it? Are you still going to do that for me, Ben?
What if I'm scared to do it?
There you go.
I mean...
I mean, it's, like, that's, I, thank you for making my point.
I don't, I understand what you're saying. I don't disagree. I, I think, I honestly think that if there is a proposal to change something in front, in front of somebody's property, whatever that change is, I think they have the right to be notified. I think they have the right to be heard about it. Whether they can stop it or not, that's another discussion, but I think they have the right to be informed. What does that look like? Is it a mailing? Is it the resident that lives there? Is it the property owner? I mean, it opens up a lot of other questions, but I still think, I honestly think the property owner has the right to be notified.
I don't disagree with you. I just don't understand why we're putting something in and giving them, but it just doesn't make sense to me. When people have said they are not comfortable doing it, why do we make it a requirement and then give them an out to not do it? Why don't we just cut that petition piece out, 75%, and just go with something that people have said they feel safe with, which is having Public Works or whoever else do it?
Ms. Aldvar has a comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, what got us to this statement that says Public Works will be involved is because it was brought to our attention of the hesitation to go knock on people's doors. There's also a lot of ambiguity surrounding this topic, which is, we really need to discuss and come to some decisions here. We'll get to that in a second. So, this had come up over the course of the past year as we've been discussing this at each meeting. And, and when I requested solutions to this concern, it was mentioned, Mike, I thought you had said it, but maybe I'm incorrect in my memory, that, that Public Works would be able to help. No? Okay. Well, then, if, if that's not the case, then I will remove that statement. However, we still have the problem in front of us of how, and it's not just safety of fearfulness of knocking on a door, but what if somebody is not able to go to the doors? Let's say they're wheel bound or some other means of not being able to go door to door. So, there's, there's a lot to that statement than just safety, although that's a large component of it. Now, also, in the document, there's two places that discuss survey of going door to door. The first part that we're talking about here is if you don't have a neighborhood association support, then it's up to you as the representative of the idea to go to 75%. And that's a number that we can discuss in a moment. But it talks about affected residents. What, who is affected? There's never been clear direction as to what that means. Is it just the two homes on each side of the speed table? Is it the neighborhood of everybody who drives through there? Is it everybody in the neighborhood that could potentially be on there? And without that guidance, we don't really even know who to, whose door to knock on. That then leads to the bigger discussion that was brought up about apartments. Who do we contact? Is it every person living there? Is it the owners? It's just gotten to become a larger conversation for this one single survey. I didn't bring a solution here. I'm just letting you know what got us to this point, saying we definitely have some work to do.
So, I'd like to definitely start these two, this, the 75% in the first, I'll come to you, Mr. Dempster, but there was somebody else I was going to call on, this, Mr. DeBlossy. Excuse me. That we're not going to solve this one tonight, but I would like to get as much input as we can on the outreach, and we've already heard from two members here, and on the affected neighbor survey, what is that, what does that look like and what sort of examples can we glean from other communities on what that has, what those definitions are? So, a recommendation can come forward for that?
I can speak to the fact, I did call one other city who had a very similar program with similar language and I reached out asking what that meant. I pretended to be somebody who was nearby there trying to utilize the program and they gave the same answer of, "Yes, you need to go contact them." No guidance around that or what that actually meant. So, that didn't really help.
Okay, good to know. So, we might be leading the way. Okay, so...
I thought there was somebody over there.
Mr. Myers, did I skip you? I apologize.
That, that's okay. I'm good.
Okay.
In the spirit of God, I think it's just...
All right, I appreciate your graciousness on that. Mr. DeBlossy? And then, okay, thank you.
Well, I had a suggestion. I had a suggestion. Since not the entire city has neighborhood associations, we, we keep A, but for those parts of the city that don't have neighborhood associations, and since the city provides money to the neighborhood associations, maybe they could have some money that goes to public outreach initiatives like this, where there'd be a mailing in a, in a neighborhood that doesn't have an association, that could put the question to the neighbors. Now, as to all the other questions, what percentage, where, how far apart from these things, that's, those are, I don't have any solutions for that. things, that's, those are, I don't have any solutions for that.
And I might suggest also that A does not preclude B, so that having a neighborhood association, you know, a person does not have to bring it to the neighborhood association. They may, but they can also bring it directly to Traffic Safety Bike Pad. So I want to put it out there, that's not exclusionary, exclusive, but it's an option. And we, of course, want to encourage people to go to the neighborhood association, have a conversation with neighbors who may also have some great ideas and additional input. Help me go.
It was Mr. Dumpster on that, Mr. Sangster.
Okay, Mr. Dumpster, thank you.
Something about, I hate to take it way back and get whatever. Anyway, something about a participatory democracy, get out there and ask your neighbors. Individual paranoia shouldn't be involved in this situation. There are, this is, you're in one of the safest communities in the world, probably, and you're, and if you start expressing fear of talking to the person across the street without some reasons, like you see him sitting in his living room with a gun aimed at the door, then get out and, and just because you don't want to or you're shy, that you are giving up your reasons or your ability to affect the government. You guys who are in the city council all went out and got signatures to be on the city council. So I take it we don't have anybody who's sort of frightened of their neighbors, they're not on the city council because they would be afraid to go out and get signatures. I don't think that's a legitimate argument. If you're that frightened, then forget the traffic. Getting signatures is a basic, God, when do we learn about that? Grade school, how you, how government works, you know? So I think it looks good. I don't like the percentage we've got. It should be 50, but, other than that, we should just let it go. I really don't appreciate people who are afraid to go get signatures. If it's that bad for you, don't do it. Don't get involved. But you guys did.
And we've heard from people who have concerns about it.
I, I know they're concerned. I know, I'm not saying they're not. I'm just saying, don't get involved in trying to change your neighborhood then. That's all. It's a consequence of your beliefs.
Mr. Sangster?
I may have a little different point of view on this. I was actually involved in a neighborhood issue when I lived on fashionable Main Avenue, you know where Taco Bell is, and several neighbors wanted a, a traffic calming device. You weren't even on Public Works that time, so it's a long time ago. And Public Works came down and said, hey, yeah, we'll put this in. But only two of the neighbors wanted it. So, and that created a war over time on fashionable Main Avenue. And I'm a proponent of, of having a significant number agreeing before we do projects. And I think 50% is too low, 75% is probably more right because you're not going to get 100, because if we're going to expend X amount of money, if half the people don't like it, they don't like it. I know the post office, if you want to, want one of those lock boxes, you have to have 100%. So that's a safety thing. The issue related to getting petitions and stuff, I think both Tammy and I have had some experience with our neighborhood association going around and putting out flyers for our My big concern has been with the no solicitation and how do we address that? That seemed to be a bigger neighborhood issue than people slamming the door in our face. But we did have a different subject. But I don't know, we, we as a board for Northwest said if there's a solicitation sign, we're not going to do it. But if there's, say on Willow Lake in our area or, or on Newburgh, we're going to change Newburgh, we got to let those people know because those that are saying no soliciting, does that mean not getting them? So my, my point is, I like to have a reasonable percentage just because we want everybody involved, but how we do get it, you know, I, I, I had some members in ours that just don't want to go, I don't want to go to those apartments. Yet department people or residents are Kaiser residents, they have the input, so.
So to your point, and Mr. Sangster, I agree, and I also took to heart what Mr. Lawyer said about the people whose properties are in proximity to the problem being identified need to be notified and, and invited to engage in the conversation. What I would like to do rather than try to wordsmith it tonight is I think we've gotten enough good information that there is support for finding a mechanism by which a person can bring a problem to Traffic Safety Bike Pad, identify the area, and then with the assistance of Public Works to get the addresses, if they don't already have them, which they should, I mean, house addresses, but not everybody uses their house address for mailing, to say, this is going to come up at Traffic Safety Bike Pad, we'd like to notify you so you can come and participate in the conversation. Because I agree with Mr. Lawyer, there has to be a way to do outreach and engage people in a conversation, but maybe not, maybe not everybody's comfortable over the fence, but this might be a forum here where there can be a larger conversation with putting together alternatives that, to Mr. Sangster's point, can be mutually agreed upon, at least to the greatest extent possible. So I would like to press pause on this so we can get through the rest of the document and ask for some additional brainstorming on the part of Traffic Safety Bike Pad. City Council, please send in your thoughts. If you wake up in the middle of the night, have a, an absolute epiphany, please get that to, should be to Ms. Bisson, to get to the Traffic Safety Bike Pad Committee. Okay, so if you have that epiphany, Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, I, I know that we just dealt with this in the context of the miracle of lights and that kind of, what did we land on for that?
We didn't.
We didn't. That, that was not yet adopted, if I remember correctly.
Okay, because I know that we had talked about some possible, some possible guidelines for that, and it seems to be sort of the same thing.
The route didn't, the route didn't change, so it didn't, I don't think it impacted because the route didn't change.
Okay, but did we come up with a policy for that?
No, I think we're still working on it and press pause because we're working through the process specifically for the event, and I think we're going to do a debrief now that we're past the event and also maybe circle back on options for that.
Was that part of the event application? So that's what we hadn't quite finalized yet, is the event application. So we had talked about it a lot, but it wasn't particularly relevant to this year, so therefore it hasn't been finalized.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so put a pin, Mr. Griffin.
Just, excuse me, just a quick note. Under the application, it says location of problem, and it says for roads indicate name and problem of limits. So that does, that does state in there, just a quick, you know, it goes from here to here, so that, that's already in here to something that.
Absolutely. So that'll help with who's going to be looped in for the conversation. Ms. Aldivar?
So we can put that responsibility on the applicant to determine the limits of the project?
No, they're just bringing this to us and they're saying, here, I think there's a problem, and here's the area that I've defined as the problem, and then it's brought to the committee and we look into it and do our research and move forward from there.
Okay, so you're not saying that this is going to define the limits?
No, I'm just saying, it's not, it's not just as, as broad. It, it does kind of say, it's a, it's a place to start looking and go from there.
And because we're not defining a project for construction, but you're starting to identify it, so what goes, happens going forward will be better defined as the problem is discussed and refined. Mr. DeBlossy?
I would just want to say with that, I understand we need to define the extent of a problem, but if, say shoreline, if you live on the south end of shoreline, you don't know if there's speeding on the north end of shoreline, but there may be speeding on the whole idea. So do you just say shoreline or do you say, well, shoreline between X street and Y street? So some streets are longer and that's going to make it harder for an individual or even a group of homes to decide what the extent of the problem is.
Right, and let's, let's go and put a pin in it for the start of the conversation. So I think if, understanding that this is a guidance, not a, a limiting definition, allows for that conversation to happen. Does that make sense? Okay, we're good? Okay, then the level one action plan study.
So once we've identified the problem and it's been presented to us, the committee, the next step is to involve the, well, the city staff. So Public Works will review it and see if there's anything concerning of immediate, and then it goes to law enforcement to work with us to do some analysis of speeding, et cetera, whatever their criteria is that that brings forward to us. So that is what the action plan study is. So in order to request that, it can come to us or they can call the non-emergency number directly to have that done. And that usually just means putting up the, what do you call that? The mobile reader, mobile speed trailer, thank you. Any questions on that?
So Council President Starr just pointed out on the appendix B, section three, the level one study, date completed, but it says to be completed by the neighborhood association or applicant. Since they're not doing the study.
They're just filling in the dates.
Okay.
So they're just filling in the application, indicating the date that the analysis was done so that when this goes to Public Works, that they are aware of.
When to go look for it? Okay, where they can find the data? Okay. Oh, Mr. DeBlossy?
So how, I, I understand with enforcement, you know, you have people out there checking, but are we going to have a metric for education? Just, again, people out there looking? The, the police out there camped out looking?
Chief Lieutenant Short Straw?
Yep, it's a good question. We, we, based on personnel and time, depending on who's calling the non-emergency number and the messages conveyed by that, it would best be a conversation between probably somebody on the Traffic Safety Bike Ways Committee and the police liaison would be the better conduit of information. If it goes through a normal dispatch center, just any random police officer is going to get that and may respond to that. And then also for the enforcement action, if you're looking for real numbers, we have traffic counters that we use to do our traffic studies, which are more reliable than a cop sitting there on random hours, and it can give you a week-long, month-long data. We just got one given back to us on another street here in town, and it tells us speeds and times and, and how many cars go by. So that's probably the most accurate way to get that information.
Put a little more detail on about that in here so people know that what enforcement looks like.
Do you think the document needs that much information?
Well, I just, what I, I want people to, to understand that when, when we're saying that level one is education and enforcement, that it's not some black box that it goes into, and there's, there's no metric to show this is what we did and this is what we found. This was the positive or negative impact of said enforcement or.
So I'm happy to have whatever we determine is, is appropriate for the document. However, by coming to us as the committee, I felt we would be the conduit of that information on a more face-to-face basis, letting them know and letting them ask questions and, and directly with city staff. But does everybody have thoughts on that?
I don't think we want to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Sangster, and I'll circle back to Council President.
I don't think we want to get too specific on the tools that they would use because things are changing and you're getting new tools, you know? All we thought about was speed bumps. Now there's common traffic devices and there's probably some new electronic stuff that we don't even know about that we may have. So we don't want, once we do this document, we don't want to have to redo it just for that. And on the educational part, I know the police have our, coming to the neighborhood associations just talking general traffic stuff, so. But I, I don't want to get too specific on what tools that Bill or the police might be using because things change too quickly.
So are you suggesting that the middle sentence enforcement efforts would include et cetera? Take that sentence out because it's too specific and go with directly from feedback can be provided immediately if police are already aware. And this request, going back to the topic sentence, the notification can be done by the applicant while presenting to Traffic Safety Bike Pad or calling the non-emergency number. And I think is at the committee, would to Ms. Aldivar's comment, that the reader board, the speed counter or some similar tool would then be discussed as the best option for getting the data necessary for next steps? So would that simplify things to actually take that sentence out? Okay. Council President Starr, you had a comment question.
Yeah, it's, I must have rocks in my head tonight. So.
Too much puppy time.
Too much puppy time. I think this kind of goes to the earlier comment that Mr. Lawyer talked about, about this being on purposefully cumbersome. And so I'm sitting here pretending, as I kind of listen and I, I walk through this, I'm pretending to have an issue in my neighborhood and how I would go through this process. And I, I'm missing something because when I look at this plan, it talks about filling out section one of the application and then, so in the plan, but then the instructions for the application talk about filling out section one of the application form, and then I submit it to the neighborhood association or I can submit directly to the Traffic Bike Way Pedestrian Safety Committee at a monthly meeting after I've done section one. So now I've set my form, submitted my form in, and it, going back to what I was, where I'm missing something is, it goes from, on the, in the, the traffic management program on page five, it goes from section one to section three, and it doesn't talk about, unless I'm missing something, once the study is complete, check the box on the application for first level one recommendation and add the date of completion in section three. So I'm missing, in the program, I'm missing section two, but how can I, if I follow the instructions, I filled out section one and I've submitted it to the committee at their, for their monthly meeting. Do you want the data in section two before I submit it to the committee, after I fill out section one in number three? And then when I look at the application, how am I going to know that the first level study was done is, if I've already submitted that application? Is somebody going to come back to me and tell me that it was done so then I can take this document, which I'm guessing I would have to keep a copy of if I've already submitted it, to fill in the information about this study being complete? So now I'm starting to get really perturbed at the purposefully cumbersome document.
Okay, so to, let's go to the first question, which is fill out section one, so should it be section one and two?
Yes, well, only half of section two can be filled out by the applicant, the other half is done with the city staff. So that is my bad that I overlooked that component being a disconnect, so that's easily fixed. But good question on turning in the document. Mr. Lawyer, do you, do you want the document actually turned in to you or do they hold on to it and we discuss it? And then turned in at the end?
I think it's best if at least a copy of the document is turned into Public Works so we have a, a record, okay? And in listening to the testimony and thinking through this, my experience over the years has. has been, these kinds of complaints, the very first thing that needs to happen is a speed and volume study performed to determine, is there a problem? That's not clearly stated in the plan. I think we can more clearly state that that is the very first thing that's done after maybe the speed board, okay, the speed trailer setup. But to acquire accurate data, a speed and volume study needs to be done. And it needs to be done for a minimum, I would say, of a week. The longer the better, actually, more accurate the data. And use that data to determine, does this move forward or not?
Isn't that what we're doing with the reader board?
The reader board, in my opinion, will just make people slow down while it's there.
But doesn't it capture data?
No, it does not. In my understanding, the reader board is just a warning, okay? This is your speed, people are gonna slow down when they see it. It's not gonna be a true, accurate data gathering, even if there was counting ability on that trailer, it's not gonna be accurate, because people are gonna slow down falsely, because the trailer's there. Accurate speed and volume studies are done, not hidden, but people don't know that the equipment's there, so they're doing their normal routine, normal practice. Acquire that data and determine, is there a problem or not?
I'm glad you pointed all this out, because I wasn't aware of that. I kept correlating it to the, the reader board, so...
I mean, the reader boards are effective, and they're, they're effective, and I truly believe this, and I think the police will, will back this up, they're effective while they're there. Once they're pulled away, their effectiveness goes away. Now, people may alter their habits, because they're concerned, maybe there's more to this than there really is, you know what I mean? But it's not a long-term solution, and it doesn't give you the opportunity to collect accurate data. It's just like a flashing speed sign, they make me slow down. Every time I see one, I slow down. If I see it's there, it's not turned on, I still slow down. Okay? If it's just a speed sign, I just go as fast as I wanna go. So, you know, human psyche is just, I'm not unique that way, it happens with, not everybody, but you know, that's a common thing, so.
So what I'm gonna do then is, is compensate some language that I'm understanding from this, since it's been missing, whether from another program or just make a paragraph. And then you can let me know if I hit the mark or not. Does that work?
Are you gonna get back to the person that the study's been done?
Absolutely, oh yeah, absolutely, yes. Get the results of the, get the results of the study, evaluate the results, get the results of the study, and let the applicant know the results of the study. Absolutely.
I, I would encourage us then to put some verbiage in this document, that there will be, because there's, if I'm reading it, there's nothing that says how I get the feedback. So I'd like to just take out some of the purposefully cumbersome process.
Okay, on this note then, do you want to contact them directly, or come through our committee, ask the conduit of that information?
That's up to the committee and the council. Honestly, that, I, it's really your decision on how you want that handled.
So, I was gonna go to Mr. Griffin, and then to Chief.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As, as I read through this, after filling out the application, we're gonna do education, and that's by putting out the speed trailer. That's the education, you're physically, you're visibly seeing it, you're gonna, hey, you know, I better slow down. Police enforcement is, if they can, if they're available, to do, you know, do what they do, take it and so on and so forth. And this, it's, the problem might just dissipate, and it might change people's habits. If it doesn't, then those people are coming back to the committee, and they're saying, this, this didn't, this didn't go anywhere, there's still an issue here. And as I read it, then that's the fun, the next step then would be to speed, put out this, do the volume and speed traffic study. And I, by doing that first off is fine, but we're skipping a couple steps, because it has a potential of going away. And, and we've seen it happen over the years, not all the time, but we show our face out there, and people don't come back, and then, and maybe a year later, and I'm not, every case is different, so that's just how I see it.
Well, and if I, I'll go to Mr. DeBlossy, you had a comment? Oh, Chief, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the committee and council. Which we do this quite often, is somebody will call in, say, I have a huge issue on my street, we put up our traffic counters, and then we measure them pretty much against your criteria here, against the five over, 50% of the cars are five over mile, five miles an hour over. We can do that early on, if somebody says there's a problem. Then if there is a problem, we can notify the committee, whomever, we usually get back to the person who calls in. If there is a problem, then we go set on the street with our motorcycles and the reader board, and we do enforcement action, education enforcement. And if that doesn't work, we can do that for a while, then put the counters back out to see if there's any change in behavior. And then if there isn't a change in behavior, based on the counters, and it's all data we can get to you, and it's all stuff we can extract, then we can go back and revisit the issue.
And I'm, I'm gonna go to Ms. Lamb, just a sec. One of the things that the committee has now put together, and I don't know if all councilors have seen this yet, is actually a spreadsheet, when a complaint comes in to say, this, this issue has been raised, this is, when it was raised, this was done, and it's a way of tracking that. So if you have multiple times people are coming in, you already have it on there, so people, A, don't feel that their story is lost, and B, the committee has information to go back and track what has been going on. So I'm hoping that part of what'll happen here will feed into the process that the committee is creating for track, tracking the issues as they're being brought up. I think this is a great way to acknowledge the, the problems that people are bringing to us as a city committee, as a city council, but also to be accountable back out, going, yes, we heard you, yes, this was done, well, nothing was ever done, well, actually, the notification for X, Y, and Z was done on these dates. So I think that's gonna be a really good communication tool both ways. Ms. Lamb?
So I think I'm just slightly confused. If we're going to use data to decide that there's actually a problem, it seems like it would make more sense that you need to inform the community that there's a problem, now let's talk about the solutions after we've decided there's actually a problem. So, I don't, I'm not sure we want to collect 75% of the names before the problem has been data-driven, recognized. So there's no reason to communicate with your, all your neighbors that there's a problem that actually isn't there.
That's a good point.
They signed.
I'm gonna go to Ms. Aldivar, and then I'll go to Mr. Dempster.
I just wanted to correlate with that, that makes total sense, give them what we've just heard from Chief Colson. I'm just going with Lieutenant Still, so I'm sorry, I just had to hesitate there a second. If, if, if anyone can just call and ask for these studies, then we shouldn't need to get the neighbors to sign to ask for a study, when there's other mechanisms to have that happen. So with that in mind, I will change that language as well, if that sounds reasonable, making that not a criteria for a single person to need to do ahead of the problem, finding the problem.
And then, as, again, getting that information back to the committee, I think is gonna be important, so if somebody does come in and they say, well, I have asked for, or so forth, it's on your spreadsheet already, you know that a study was done, and it keeps the committee informed about where different places, problem places have been identified in the community. I think that only makes the committee stronger, and better able to respond to people coming in and trying to have conversations about issues in their neighborhoods. Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. I guess the only question from a staffing point of view is, can anybody now just call in and take away city resources? So I mean, sometimes policy has to keep in mind, is, is there a proof, an amount of proof that you have to sort of engage in? Like, do you have to get your neighbors to say, yeah, there is a problem like you? Or can, now can anybody just say, there's a problem, and now you have to throw resources at it? Just came to mind.
Thank you. Chief, do you want to talk a little bit about when a call comes in and somebody wants the speed trailer?
Yeah, we try to deploy the speed radar every location that someone calls in, and it's just a matter of who's in line to get it next. We have a couple different radar trailers that we can put out there. Typically is what we do, is we don't get to this extreme, obviously, very often, where somebody wants to modify a street, they call in a traffic complaint, someone's speeding too much. Okay, great, we'll go sit on the street, is what we do, is we'll put a motor on the street, motor officer, and he'll monitor during the hours in which they complain about, if it's within their work hours. And we then call the person back and say, hey, we sat on the street from these hours to these hours, these days of the week, and this is what we found. If they're not, if that then rises to the level of them wanting to commit, to contact the committee, say, hey, they were out there, and all sorts of different stuff happened, then we could go into the, you know, your traffic plan, and change the roads, and doing statistical stuff. But we don't go directly right to the traffic counters until we identify that there's some kind of a problem, usually. But most people don't even know, think there's an option to change the street and put speed bumps, or tables, or, I don't know, whatever else they want.
Okay, Mr. Dempster?
Yes.
And then Mr. Dempster.
Brenda, if, her comment about whether these people know...
Microphone?
It's on, it's on.
Okay.
Whether or not the people know, you just went out and got signatures from 50% of your neighbors, so they're all, regarding the plan, so they're aware of what's going on. You're not gonna be surprising anybody about, oh, I didn't know we had a problem on this street? I don't think that'll happen. Secondly, Tammy, we have a spreadsheet we've been using, not quite as in detail as you've talked about, but we have one where we marked out, when people bring problems to us, traffic, safety, bikes, whatever, we, if we do something, we look at it, we have a little teeny, it's more of a working one, it's not even, I wouldn't say it's real polished, but it works really well, because we have a place, who brought it, what we did, or what the problem was, what the, where it, what its status is, resolutions.
That's what I'm referring to.
Okay, so we have that.
Yes, and that's what I was referring to, that you have done that, and I think it's a fantastic tool for communicating...
Oh, okay.
...to the committee, and getting that into the written record. And when somebody comes in and says, I'm from this street, and you look at it and go, oh, yes, I, we saw this, this, and this. So everybody gets on the page much more quickly, and I think it really facilitates better conversation with people about issues that they're bringing forward, rather than having to reinvent the wheel every time they come in.
And our police liaison to the traffic committee has always, when we've discussed with him, we, where the needs are for a traffic, whatever, your speed survey, that is another source of having that survey done. And it's nice if you'll do it for an individual, but ours is from a committee, so. It works.
Okay. Can we go on to step, oh, Mr. Sencer?
I just don't want us to lose the concept of getting, doing the survey, what point we do. Clearly, when there's a solution, people need to know what the solution is. So I'm not so much tied with having it up front, but somewhere that 75% needs to come in, because that can sabotage a solution real quickly. I've actually experienced it, so.
Okay. So I'm gonna throw it back to the committee to determine at which point the outreach to the, and however you want to define the affected neighbor, or the area that's involved, at what point that is the effective point for that conversation? Okay? Step 3 is the analysis of Action Plan Study. So this is, once you have your results. So as moving forward, the thresholds for the Level 2 consideration, and maybe this is what we're talking about, because this is when you start talking about solutions, is that correct?
This actually also ties into the scoring system.
Okay.
More so, so a little both there, determining if there's a problem, what the nature level of it is, and then the criteria for scoring, so that if there's more than one, we can appropriately do the, do the more important project. While we're on this page, though, I don't want to take time for this, I just want to bring it to staff's attention, that one of the questions I asked in my email was about the disconnect between the scoring system in the back, in the appendix, compared to this right here. And I see the 85% versus 50% is one change, but there's also other criteria that don't match, one says 800 cars, there's a thousand. So if you could spend a little more time looking at that, and we can decide which is the best numbers to use, that would help, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna go to Counsel President Starr, and then Mr. DeBlossy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I figured out it wasn't too much puppy time, it wasn't enough puppy time, because I'm having another, I'm mind blocked here. Section 3, to be completed by the neighborhood association or applicant. The first box is first Level 1 study, colon, right? First Level 1, colon, is the study. The second box is second Level 1, colon?
That was a holdover from the original document, that was weird and oddly to me, and so I kept some of the same language, not changed too much?
Oh, let's change it. And then, I still go back to, and if this is the purposefully cumbersome piece, I would love to not put the onus on the applicant or the neighborhood association to track, whatever that means, second Level 1, colon, analysis. It just, I'm, I'm still confounded about why we're putting that on the applicant to track when the study and the analysis is complete, that they don't have any control over. So I, if it's, again, part of that purposefully cumbersome, I'd like to remove that from this process, because it doesn't need to be purposefully cumbersome.
Well, if I might suggest, at least it needs to be part of the record, and so, looking at our staff members, can this be an electronic document that begins to autofill as studies are done? That would be available to be able to download? I'm getting a head nod.
I believe so. I'm not all that knowledgeable about document creation and autofill, but I have to believe the technology exists that it can be done.
Thank you.
Tim's going, yeah, Tim's, I believe when Tim said, yes, we can do this.
That's a, that's a strong affirmative, so, thank you, that will take the onus off, because once those are completed, the data would be then attached to the document, to the record, and it would autofill.
So the whole application would be now electronic?
Yes.
That saves a lot of problems.
Yes. That can, that also can be done electronically, so...
Oh, okay, can I bring up a point, then? One of the suggestions that came up for outreach, it was by me, for the record, is if we have a place where we need to get signatures and feedback, that we just stick a sign that has a QR code that people can scan, that feeds to this document and interface where they can give feedback. And therefore, we're also capturing people who use the road, not just those who live in front of the sign, so.
Love it.
So I don't just give a thought, and I'd love feedback on that, or other suggestions of similar leniency, especially if we're allowed to electronic?
Love it. There we go.
Thank you.
There we go.
That is gonna be on the not allowed to speak those words list. That I'm creating right now.
Goes with status quo. All right, fabulous. So have that conversation again on options for electronic and for autofill for the data that comes in. Again, that's more outreach, more transparent to the applicant, the community, and then if neighbors say, well, where is that? Oh, it's right here, you can click, and there you go, it's all available. So transparency, I love it.
Salem does it.
And there we go, and we're not even the first ones to do it! Really? Oh, fine. I'll give them that one, once. All right, Mr. DeBlossy?
So I have a concern about the thresholds that we have. So it says for near red routes, speed is 50% past speed, five or more miles per hour, closest speed. For red collector, it's 85%, 10 or more. For red collector, it's 85%, 10 or more. So if I'm, I'm no statistician, but I understand that what it's saying is 50% of the people are speeding five or more miles per hour.
No, it's 50th percentile.
Right, so that means what?
So it's not 50%, a percentile is around that, that center. Mr. Lawyer, go ahead.
I'm not sure I can really explain it, but the 50th percentile is not 50%.
Correct.
85th percentile is not 85%.
On the range.
The best way I can explain it is way back in my career, we were doing lead and copper sampling, and the state put out the requirements that your 85th percentile results could not be over X, okay? That didn't mean 85 of the 100 samples, it meant the range of the results.
Right.
Okay? So the best explanation I can give you is that 50th percentile, 85th percentile is not 50%, 85%. It's a different calculation.
Can I give it a shot? I taught math a couple of years. Pick a street and you have 100 people going down, and you got the speed limits on all of them, forget the speed limits, just count up to 50, that's your 50th percentile. It may be above or below the average speed on that street. The one we did over on Claggett, the people were driving under the speed limit on the average, and the 50th percentile was under the speed limit. But I agree with Mike, I'm not, and I defer to the police department, when they talk about the 85th percentile or 75th percentile, is that a recommendation from a national organization? Do you, I mean, you know, I'm assuming you might know.
That's a great question, thank you. I've never been a traffic officer or ran traffic. Sergeant Dave Leday probably can answer that question for you. He's sitting at home, probably watching TV right now. But maybe Bill Lawyer can, his hand is really high right now.
I have one other piece on that, is all of that assumes that all these 100 people driving up and down the street are doing it on some sort of gradual, there's a bunch going really slow, and as slowly they get faster and faster and faster and faster, and then pretty soon you got somebody driving down Claggett at 85 miles an hour. They're in the 99th percentile or something, okay? So they're way, way over. Gets complicated because that's not what anybody who came in with a problem was talking about. What they were talking, okay, they're talking about, it seems to me, my wife and I were walking on Wheatland, God, those guys are going fast. Now they're doing 40. I mean, that's not fast, that's. So when you're walking, or in your opinion, it looks like they're going too fast, or they're going too fast because there's cars parked on both sides. Those are more emotional responses, so that's why we have the police post that. Now, the problem I have is that percentiles give you one type of picture. That's assuming that you have some sort of gradual, what we call a normal curve like that, and I'm not sure that's true. You may have three-fourths of the people driving about the speed limit. And then you have a big gap between the 25 mile an hour in most neighborhoods, and you got a bunch of people driving 50. Now, they may only be in the, you know, you may check the 85th percentile, and they're all driving the speed limit. But if you've got a small core group who are driving way over the speed limit, it won't show up when you do this percentile rank. So you also need to look at the average and the media, a bunch of different statistical things. So I was saying, that's one, I'm not, that's why I was wondering if somebody recommended the 85th percentile, because that's not necessarily fast. It may be slow, or it may be really fast, you don't know.
Yes, and I'm gonna go with Mr. Lawyer and then Mr. Husband, and Council Husband.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually had a conversation with a traffic engineer, an actual certified traffic engineer. I say that for Shannon's case, because we've had this discussion for years, about the use of the 85th percentile, 50th percentile, and where that came from in anticipation of this question. That is an industry standard that traffic engineers have used for years to determine speeding problems, yes or no? 85th percentile is a historic number. It is being, it's transitioning to the 50th percentile. That is becoming the more acceptable value to use. So that's after I answered the questions, and my recommendation was 85%. I've since learned that in the industry, the 50th percentile is becoming the standard, okay? Now, that's for local streets. I didn't ask specifically if it's different for collector streets, I can ask that question. But that is the answer to where that comes from.
All right, we all learned something, a number of new things. Council Husband.
Mr. Dempster, from one mathematician to another, we can reasonably infer that cars traveling at a certain speed and that speed figure, like you said, regardless of what the posted speed limit is, is an independent, every one of those statistics is an independent variable because one, one car's speed is not necessarily going to immediately determine what another car's speed is unless they happen to be riding yea fast, which is statistically unlikely for the purposes of our discussion. So I think that we can assume normal distribution and related statistical concepts therein. Ergo, what, Bill and Chief Goldson?
Ms. Aldabar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So once we get the data, who calculates the percentile for this? Police Department? Public Works?
A computer.
That was my first point. Okay, so you give the data from a computer to the-
And it autofills.
Even better.
Yes. Mr. Philbrick.
My concern on this in part was that it assumes that the speed limit of the street is appropriate for the street. There can be a speeding problem where the, the posted speed limit for the-
Oh. Go ahead and turn that one off and grab another one. Lieutenant, can you pop your microphone that direction, please? Never mind. Okay, go ahead and kill that. I think it's getting feedback from the other one. Ah, gotcha.
It simply assumes that the posted speed limit for the street is, continues to be appropriate, even though the community may have changed significantly around it. And so a problem that the neighborhood could be reacting to, it's conceivable that it could be still within the posted speed limit, but it still could be a problem that needs to be addressed.
I would agree, and that, but this would open up that conversation to talk about the posted speed limit, and some of the state laws have recently made it a little easier for chunks of traffic. And we still have to apply, though, for the change in the speed limit, so just for the record, we don't get to do that independently, although a lot of us would love to have that option to say, you know what, we're going to change this. But I know some people have different driving styles among us. I'll leave it there. All right, we have really been at this for a, for quite a while, so what I'd like to do is talk through a little bit of step four and step five, and then we're going to leave the CIP implementation funding for another time. Because this goes actually into explaining how we get funding through, actually put together our capital improvement program and local funding versus, and maybe in here I'll also talk a little bit about this tip funding. So we'll get to that another time. I think for tonight, the main thing is to get through these steps that we understand so that the committee and their staff liaisons can continue to work on this program. And again, tremendous thanks, this has been a huge lift to get this far, so fantastic work. Let's go to step four, the level two action engineering and prioritization by scoring. Ms. Aldabar.
So this is where the scoring system comes in that we've been discussing, and there's a whole, several pages in the back appendix that's detailed, that are more even beyond what we just saw with a little bit of discussion about 85%. With that said, then, it talks about the engineering of it once it has been approved and has determined to be the top score. And then when we know we're within the proper funding time period is where it takes you through the next few steps. And there's a lot of steps shown here, but over half of them only qualify for, or apply to a large project, which, as I read through this today, I don't even know what projects we would have that have to fill all this, because most of what we work with are pretty small things. Anything that's pretty major that takes you through this is quite, quite, quite impressively large of a project, and it makes sense if you read it. For the sake of what we're working on, really, we just have a process like we recently saw. It's approved by Public Works, the funding is determined, it goes to city council for approval, and it moves forward from there. The larger projects, as I mentioned, you form a committee, you create what it is you want to see built with the committee itself, so this is like taking it away from Public Works as the sole owner of that concept, and it's much more involved. So if we want to discuss it all, we can.
So just looking at the level two action engineering prioritization and so forth, there's a couple of things that I'm hearing happen here. Some of them are projects that we would want to, that the Traffic Safety Bike Pad would make recommendation to Public Works for inclusion in developing the capital improvement program, the CIP, for the, either the upcoming year, or if it's something more urgent to make Public Works aware, and if funding becomes available, as happened earlier this year, we had that project over on Alder for the flashing speed signs that because of a favorable project balance, those funds were available this project year rather than having to go to the next CIP. So I think there's a double benefit here. The project list that gets developed by Traffic Safety Bike Pad informs, and done in conjunction with the staff, gives them options that when funding becomes available, they can jump a project up the queue, like that project over on Alder, and get it done. But also in putting together the budget for the following year, Public Works will have gotten input from the community via Traffic Safety Bike Pad on priority areas to put together that CIP list for that following year. Also understanding that there's a big chunk of our street funds that go into maintenance for our roads, paving and so forth, and that's all done through the pavement evaluation process, the PEP, the pavement evaluation program. Am I, I'm looking at Mr. Lawyer, did I get that correct?
It's actually PCI, Pavement Condition Index, is the values that we use, but close enough.
Okay, close enough. I was thinking airports, I was going the best I could. All right, so yeah, the pavement, the PCI, Pavement Condition Index. So that, I'm trying to kind of wrap into a nutshell about where this process will end up, and the importance of the work then of Traffic Safety Bike Pad in helping move projects with public input into consideration for our budgeting process going into each fiscal year. So that's what I'm hearing is going to be the upshot here, is that pretty much what you have been discussing? I'm getting head nods, which people can't hear on the, oh, that's right, we're being broadcast, people can see you. Fantastic. What I would encourage everybody to do as we're looking at the prioritization and scoring, Mr. Lawyer's going to get back the, the new standards on the percentiles for collectors to get that into the scoring sheet. Okay. Are there other criteria or scoring mechanisms or pieces that we want to make sure get considered? Ms. Aldabar?
Not necessarily considered, because the appendix itself shows way more criteria, like such as, we'll cut through traffic as one, pedestrian generators, sidewalks, schools, all sorts of other things will increase the score and bring attention to the project itself. But I really ask that the numbers become consistent between the two locations, because that's a big disconnect that I think is going to create a problem before we know it.
Okay. So that's something to align. I'm gonna go to Council President Star and then to Ms. Lamb.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On section four, in appendix B on that application, it says that the neighborhood association or the applicant has determined that the following action be taken for this application. Are we, I mean, I could get back all the data in the world or the studies, and I can still think that there's a problem, and I could mark, if you're letting me make that decision, I could still think that something needs to be done and mark level two, you know, refer to Public Works, because Mrs. Jones wants a speed bump in our neighborhood on streets A, B, C, and D. So if you're letting me make that decision on the application, I'm just asking if that's intentional to let the applicant determine that what following action needs to be taken? Or is this-
So the, the application's designed to be filled in, means mostly by the applicant, and that's why you're seeing the language you are, but once we move it to be electronic, we can easily let that box be checked by city staff for the decision-
So then you would want to change, though, the verbiage as well, because I don't think we want the people that, I mean, I, like, I would keep pushing for something if I wanted a speed bump somewhere, I would keep marking that this is the action that I want taken. And then just kind of a detail note, when you create the, the electronic form, it's not just the neighborhood chair, it should be the applicant or the neighborhood chair, because all along through this process, we've allowed it to be an applicant if there isn't a neighborhood association. So why would you, you need to add that down there for the signature line?
I agree. I think it was there, and when I had to shrink it into one page, as it grew, it got removed.
All right. Okay, Mr. Dempster, and then-
Just, I don't, maybe it's public information, I think all of us know it. This is a method for people to make some changes, or they see as changes. But if it doesn't work and they get turned down, people always have the right, I think, to go, Kyle, I want to talk about this, I don't care if it got turned down or not. Or go to the city council and stand up and ask you to, okay, everybody said we don't need it, I still want it, I have the right to go to you and ask for it, and you have the right to say no.
I also have often said I would like to take those to Traffic Safety Bike Pads, they'll say, we have been there, I said, now I'll be able to say, great, I would love to see the record, and that way we'll all be on the same page. So data is power.
Okay, and then one other thing, and I noticed it earlier, I've already said once, I would, and Tammy's aware of this, I don't like the term property owner in this document anywhere.
Where are you, in residence?
I don't care about absentee landlords, or people who own property who don't live in Kaiser. And I think in the neighborhood, for example, it's suppose you have an apartment and a bunch of other stuff, but nobody locally owns it, and the people in the apartment want something done. They're the residents of Kaiser, and we're talking about the money that they pay through their rent that went for taxes. So I'm not concerned that the property owners in this block all agree that we need to do something, they don't live here. And so we should be talking about residents, we should never be talking about absentee, you know, property owners. That's what I think.
I'm gonna go to, really quickly, stand by, Mr. DeBlossi. To Mr. Lawyer, to that point, as we were discussing earlier, projects that affect the public rights of way, streets and so forth are one thing, projects that would affect the properties that are owned would be another. So to Mr. Dempster's point about residents bringing these issues forward, I don't disagree. At what point does the calculus change and the property owners become the key?
If it's a local improvement district.
Okay.
Property owner's responsible to participate in the cost of a project, the property owner, and I think it's not just my opinion, I think legally, it has to be the property owner to be committed to that. to be the property owner to be committed to that cost. I doubt you can have a tenant commit a property owner to a cost.
Okay. So, whether it directly affects the property owner would be in charge or responsible for paying for the improvement?
Yes. And the other thing that comes to my mind, where I think it might be appropriate for a property owner to be informed or to have to say is if it's a... I'm going to say it this way, when I don't really have an example, but a distinct livability issue that may change the livability of their property, that may be another scenario. I don't have an example that comes that I can cite, but something that, in one sense, could be perceived to negatively affect their property, you might want to consider having, at least informing them, maybe not having their approval or their buy-off, but at least informing them. Just my thought.
But in all of the processes we've been discussing, this residents can bring this forward. Okay? And you don't see a problem with that? For bringing forward a problem or issue?
Not from what I've seen in my experience, no.
Okay.
I don't see there being negative impacts to a property for most of the stuff I've seen over my career.
Okay. Mr. Lindsay.
Thank you. Just, I could add one detail maybe is whenever you have to notify property owners is when it's land use, basically. And so, if a project, even if it was done by us being kind of our own applicant and to our own system, we would notify it at the appropriate level if it rose to the level of what we were doing was land use. But that's the solution. That's not at the problem discovery, you know, part of this, so.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the distinction. Okay. Mr. Dublasi.
Yeah. A little bit ago, you were asking if there were any other criteria? A little earlier, you were saying about the criteria for the scoring. I had one suggestion for a change and one perhaps addition. The suggestion for a change was we talk only about 500 feet for a school or other pedestrian generator from the project area. There could be kids, you know, perhaps walking through an area, so maybe extend it out to the limit we have for blinker light for, say, schools or something like that. The other thing was, and I imagine this could be found pretty easily, some demographics, either vehicle ownership, so we know, you know, where the more pedestrian generated trips are going to be coming from, or indoor, an age breakdown where you have, you know, significant number of children or elderly who might be more likely to be using the streets and more at risk.
So, generally, we don't have the age demographics for housing, but if you're talking about housing types such as senior living and so forth, that might be a demographic to include?
Yeah, whatever we could get, yeah.
All right. Councilor Reed and then Ms. Lamb.
Actually, I was just bringing your attention to Ms. Lamb.
Thank you. Thank you. I think I've... My apologies. I skipped you.
Thank you, Councilor Reed. So, we were talking about data-driven earlier, and I suggested that the names be after you determine there's a problem, but it occurred to me that these problems are all car-driven, and it's car-driven data. But there are other problems in our neighborhoods, like River Crest is very dark, and walking on it in the night is dangerous, and there's no sidewalks.
No street lights.
How will we be able to use this form to bring that to the attention of this committee if we're going to use data-driven criteria?
That's a very good question, and I think that for, you know, what we're talking about, traffic management, but I think to your point, to have, you know, people can still bring issues and questions around sidewalks. I totally agree. River Crest and that area is very dark. Street lighting districts is another whole animal, which is outside the scope of this conversation, but it's one that I have wanted to engage in for a very long time. So, you're singing my song. But when it comes to sidewalks and so forth, we do have program options, and it's one of our goals is to continue to develop those options. So, I would invite us to put a pin in that one because that's larger conversation on how do we fund sidewalks in areas where they don't exist or where they're incomplete? And that's going to be a separate conversation than what we're talking about tonight. But you are absolutely right. It is a need in this community because of the age of our neighborhoods that were developed prior to the requirement for sidewalks. In other words, I agree with you. I want them. Mr. Philbrick.
Just a quick question. Is the same... Part of the purpose of this scoring was to be able to rank the priority of different construction projects? Is this same scoring used for all Public Works projects that, you know, we'd be in the CIP and stuff, we're trying to rank them with?
Not historically, no. The projects are more selected based on grant funding or council priorities, those kind of things, but not a scoring process historically.
And if I might add, I think some of them were prioritized when we created our Transportation System Plan. Some of the big ones that...
Yes, some of them were, absolutely, yes.
Yeah. Verta Wheatland are two that come to mind, and then I think Windsor Island Road is another one. So, some of the big ones that are moving forward. So, we'll keep you all abreast of that as the project moves... Those projects move up the list for getting the federal funding through the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study. We are past our time. I want to thank everybody for an extremely productive evening and...
And the work.
Yeah, tremendous amount of work. Bravo to everybody, Traffic Safety Bike Pad, our neighborhood associations, Community Diversity Engagement Committee, Public Comment. We really appreciate this. We are going to kick it back to the committee under the capable leadership of Ms. Aldivar to work on the next draft, and we look forward to seeing the next iteration come forward and recommendations either for another work session or adoption as you see fit. Ms. Aldivar.
I have posed questions in the email, which staff answered for me, but some of the answers said that the council needs to discuss. So, did you receive those answers and see the... Did... No. We'll make sure you see those, and if there's any, I can get more feedback from those that are above us and not...
They're included in the packet. Okay, my bad.
There.
All right. Okay, so what we can do is, once we get the next iteration, oh, here they are.
What are the answers there?
Oh, is this... No. Where's they at?
It's a policy issue for City Council.
Okay. Show me the page.
So, there's just, yeah, like, right, some of these right here. This is a policy for City Council to consider.
Okay.
So, we need to talk about them.
All right. So, I would like to put a pin in those. Thank you for those questions, and let's get to the next iteration. Some of them may be addressed in that, and then let's make sure that whatever questions still haven't been answered yet, that we can circle back and address. Okay? We did a lot of great work tonight, and we'll quit while we're ahead. All right?
Thank you.
The time is eight forty-one. We are adjourned.